It's after nine o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. If you need an agenda, please go ahead and grab one off of the back bookshelf. Approval of the October 22nd, 2018 minutes, as everyone had a chance to review them. If there's no corrections, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Approval of today's agenda. If there's no changes to the agenda, I'd entertain a motion to approve today's agenda as well.
So moved.
Motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. PJ, the consent agenda. Actually, let me talk about the... There was a news story, at least from what I've heard. I didn't see it, so I just want to address this, just in case anybody's here for this today. The Kroll hearing for the rescheduling of that date is... We're just going to talk about the rescheduling of that date today and probably reschedule that. It was not rescheduled to today. So if there's any confusion about that, the Kroll hearing is not today. We're just going to discuss setting a new meeting for the Kroll hearing. All right, PJ, consent agenda.
PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department, consent agenda. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the planning commissioner recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decisions, which was quite a few.
Yes, serious.
Item three, conditional use permit review 9138 for Harmony Baptist Church to review a church in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 9138 with five conditions. Item four, conditional use permit review 9841 for Prairie Acres LLC to review a mobile home park in suburban residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 9841 as the property has been annexed into the City of Rapid City. Item five, conditional use permit review 9842 for Prairie Acres LLC to review a mobile home park in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 9842 with 18 conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review 0847 for Roger Stockstent to review a single-wide manufactured home as a permanent residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 0847 with six conditions. Item seven, conditional use permit review 1307 for Jacque Brott to review the operation of a dude ranch to include lodging and horse trail rides in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1307 with 12 conditions. Item eight, conditional use permit review 1430 for Sherri Farley to review a single-wide manufactured home to be used as a caretaker's residence in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1430 with five conditions. Item nine, conditional use permit review 1713 for Diana Bryant to review living in an existing, single-wide, mobile home while building a single-family residence on the subject property in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 1713 as it is no longer needed. Item 10, conditional use permit review 1733 for bituminous paving. Terry Sewell is the agent to allow a temporary hot mix asphalt batch plant, stockpile site, and contractor storage area for contract work in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1733 to November 26, 2018, planning commission meeting with two conditions. Item 11, conditional use permit review 1736 for Garrett and Caitlin Shields, Hinterwood LLC, to review a recreational resort to include the use of the existing bed and breakfast and to rent the lower portions of it and the addition of the maximum of eight seasonal guest cabins on the subject property in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1736 with 23 conditions. Item 12, construction permit review 1703 for Mitch Morris to review the grading of the site and the use of a storage area to stockpile soil and concrete debris. Staff recommends approval of the extension of construction permit 1703 with seven conditions. Item 13, construction permit review 1713 for Western Construction Incorporated to review a portable asphalt batch plant on the subject property and to level and grade approximately 26 acres with berms and dust control ponds implemented on site. Staff recommends approval of the extension of construction permit 1713 with nine conditions. Item 14, construction permit review 1714 for Cody Shad to review the construction of a road construction outside of a section line right-of-way and to satisfy a condition of approval for CS 1602. Staff recommends to continue the review of construction permit 1714 to December 3, 2018, planning commission meeting with one condition. Item 15, construction permit review 1715 for City of Rapid City, Banner &amp; Associates is the agent, to review the installation of a six-inch, eight-inch, and 12-inch water main to provide Rapid City potable water to the Mesa View subdivision and Morris Lane. Staff recommends to end construction permit 1715 with the applicant's concurrence. Item 16, planned unit development review 9301 for George Bieber to review a recreation resort in a planned unit development. Staff recommends approval of the extension of planned unit development 9301 with five conditions. Item 17, planned unit development review 0509 for Richard Sturkle to review an existing planned unit development in accordance with Section 213 and 508 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the extension of planned unit development 0509 with 14 conditions. Item 18, layout plat 1738 for Dorothy Johnson Estates. Great Western Bank is the personal representative for Dorothy Johnson Estates, which is to create lots A, B, C, and D of Johnson Estates subdivision. Staff recommends to continue layout plat 1738 to December 3, 2018, planning commission meeting. Item 19, rezone 1710 and comprehensive plan amendment 1709 for Dorothy Johnson Estates, Great Western Bank, personal representative of Dorothy Johnson Estates, to rezone 21.39 acres from limited agriculture district to suburban residential district and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from planned unit development sensitive to suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue rezone 1710 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1709 to December 3, 2018, planning commission meeting. Three more. Item 20, conditional use permit 1841 for Andrew Foley to allow a single-wide, mobile home to be used as a single-family residence on the subject property in the general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit 1841 to the November 26, 2018, planning commission meeting. Item 21, conditional use permit 1842 for Keith and Sandra Lochner to allow a hair salon to be located within a detached garage in a subject property in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue conditional use permit 1842 to the November 26, 2018, planning commission meeting to allow for re-advertising. Last one. Item 22, construction permit 1813 for James and Amanda Tyler to construct a road to access the future residence. Staff recommends approval of construction permit 1813 with seven conditions.
Any items that staff would like to have pulled for separate consideration?
No, sir.
All right. Any items from the membership that need to be pulled? Any items that the membership want pulled?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Item number five and item number 22.
22? All right. Any others?
No. Was that five and 22?
Five and 22.
Thank you.
Any audience members like to have any of these consent items removed from the consent agenda? If not, that leaves our consent agenda as items number three through four, six through 21. And if that's the case, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
So I got it.
Motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Take us to item number five, please.
Thank you.
My quick question on item number five was, it appears that Lot 36 had applied for a carport back in 2011, didn't do it. Some comments were written that it had setback issues, but then the carport has shown up, so to say. And now it's one of the non-conforming ones. And my question is, how far into the 25-foot setback is it? Is it an issue as far as, you know, access, site distances, sidewalk, that kind of stuff?
See if I can pull up the picture of it. It's that one right there. By my measurement, it's about five feet from the property line. That fence line right there, just beyond the mailbox, is, without it getting surveyed, what I would anticipate is probably pretty close to what the property line is. So by my measurement on Rapid Map, it's probably about five feet from the property line.
Has staff received any complaints about the carport?
I have not recently, but I did talk to the property manager last week about this carport. So she does understand what needs to go into bringing this particular carport into compliance.
And so they need to come back to the board for a setback variance?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. I have no further questions and would recommend approval of the extension of conditional use permit 9842 with the 18 conditions.
There's a motion for approval.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number 22.
My quick question on item number 22 was, I didn't see that there were any comments from the South Dakota Department of Transportation. And there's, if they have an approach that's coming to the highway, won't they be required to get an approach permit?
They do have an approach permit?
They do.
I must have just forgot to put that in the staff report.
Okay, so they have applied for and have received an approach permit from the DOT?
Yep.
Okay. I have no further questions on item number 22 and would recommend or would motion for approval of construction permit 1813 with the seven conditions listed.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. That takes us to item number 23.
Good morning. Item number 23 is construction permit CP 1812. And the applicant is in the audience, and we just did speak with him. And we would like to continue this item until November 26, 2018, planning commission meeting.
So moved.
Motion to move the... To continue the November 26 meeting. Motion by Rich. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. That takes us to item number 24.
All right. Item 24, Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director, sorry. Item 24 is a preliminary plat 1834. This is to create lots 1 through 8 of the Keystone Y subdivision. The applicant is Schreiner Investment, Shane Schreiner. The surveyor is Spurlet Consulting. As this property exists today, it's four separate mining claims. All of them are currently zoned, general agriculture district. There is no special flood hazard area. And they are all located within an existing road district. What they are proposing to do with this plat is they are proposing to create eight lots out of this. Now, there is also a 40-foot wide access easement that is proposed on this plat that would provide access to all eight lots. There's a 55-foot radius turnaround noted on both proposed lots 4 and 6. And the proposed lots do not meet the minimum lot size requirement for general agriculture districts, so they will have to be rezoned or get the appropriate lot size variances. This request was routed through the interdepartmental review process. The county highway department does still have several concerns regarding the proposed access through there as there are several things that don't appear to meet the subdivision regulations. So they will either have to redesign the proposed roadway through there or they will have to request subdivision regulation variances. This proposed access also will likely need to be named. Well, it will need to be named since it provides access to more than five lots. So they will have to go through that process as well. This was before you in June of this year for their layout plat. It got approved by the Board of Commissioners on June 19. What they did, the reason this kind of took so long to get back to the preliminary plat is they actually had to redesign this proposed access before. In the layout plat, it was a much simpler proposed access through there. But in order to try to meet as many subdivision regulations as they can in terms of slope and grades and things along those lines, they did some pretty significant design plans for this proposed access in here. So that also, in turn, did a little bit to change some of the acreages of the proposed lots. The acreage changes are pretty minimal between the layout plat and the preliminary plat, so staff didn't see a need for them to start over with the layout plat. If the preliminary plat is approved, the applicant will need to obtain, at a minimum, approval of all of the following before it can be filed with the register of deeds. They'll need a construction permit as part of this road already exists on these properties. They'll need to name the road. They'll need to do subdivision regulation variances. They'll either need to do lot size variances or rezone, and then they'll need to do their final plat. So staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat 1834 with 14 conditions.
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I just have a simple little question, but I'm kind of confused. On the first page, under size, it's, you know, 15.5 acres. But then when you add up the different acreages of these four lots, it comes out to be closer to 30, as well as, you know, if you add up the acreages of the eight lots, it's about 30. So what's... Where do the 15, where does that fit in?
Um, I guess I would have to look and see where that 15.503 comes from. The front page is usually pulled off of Rapid Map, so it's possible that maybe we just didn't add in one of the mining claims that already exists right now. We pulled that information off of Rapid Map, and then the proposed lots comes from what the surveyor
I see.
Put on their plat.
All right.
So I'll look at that acreage, though, for their final plat.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
Have all of the design concerns from the highway department been addressed? When they resubmitted their plans, were they able to fix all of the issues that they had?
I have not seen updated plans as of yet. From the layout plat to now, they've done some significant changes. Would the highway department's comments are based on the roadway that you see right now? I have not seen any updated plans for them, and I don't know if they've been having discussions with the highway department or not. I actually have a meeting with the surveyor this afternoon to kind of discuss some things moving forward with this plat. So I don't know if they're going to try to redesign it or not. There's some pretty crazy topography up there. So I know when they submitted on last time, they were concerned that they might not be able to hit all of the slope requirements. So they might be looking at just doing some subdivision regulation variances to try to deal with it the best that they can.
Any further questions for staff? Any members of the audience want to speak on behalf of this item?
Mr. Chair, I have another question.
Go ahead.
So if we approve this preliminary plat and then they move forward and do the design changes, and then they submit their final plat, and they're not able to make all of those changes to the design, then they'd have to require... They would have to get approved variances prior to the final plat being completed, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. No further questions.
Fair enough. Any further questions? Seeing none, the current recommendation is approval of the preliminary plat, PL 1834, with the following 14 conditions. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carries. Takes us to item number 25.
Thank you. Item 25 is the layout plat 1835 and a subdivision regulations variance 1807. This is to create lots 1 and 2 of Castle Creek Estates and to waive some plating requirements. The applicant is John and Barbara Wilson. The surveyor is Fisk Land Surveying. There is a representative from Fisk in the audience today if you have any questions. As this property exists today, it is zone general agriculture district. It's 163.01 acres. No special flood hazard. Access is off of South Castle Creek Road via a private road easement, and it currently contains a single-family residence and indoor arena and an onsite wastewater treatment system. So what they are proposing to do with this is they are proposing to put this into Lot 1 and Lot 2 of Castle Creek Estates. Lot 1 would be 80.04 acres and would be vacant. Lot 2 would be 83.07 acres and would contain the existing structures. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. The highway department did have a comment regarding wanting to see the line dividing lots 1 and 2 angled to meet the center line of the access road. After this staff report was written, the surveyor actually did contact the highway department, and they discussed that line. The highway department is now satisfied with where that line meets. The surveyor has assured the highway department that there is plenty of frontage access for that proposed Lot 1, so the highway department no longer has that concern for where that center line comes in. The subdivision regulations variance that they are proposing is they are requesting that the plat be at a scale of 1 inch to 300 feet. Staff does not see an issue with this due to the size of the lot. It would be difficult to get it to the 1 inch equals 100 feet, as our subdivision regulation states. They are also requesting to waive any additional road improvements to South Castle Creek Road. South Castle Creek Road is an improved for-service road, and a for-service special use permit is required for any road improvements to that road. The third one that they're requesting is dedication of right-of-way and improvements to the undeveloped section line right-of-way. The section lines surrounding the subject property are mostly located on for-service lands where section line right-of-ways are not recognized. There is a small corner of section line right-of-way that crosses the subject property on an eastern corner, so staff does not see an issue with waiving this requirement. And the last one that they're requesting is percolation test and soil profile hole information. Proposed Lot 2 already has an existing onsite wastewater treatment system, and percolation test and soil profile hole inspection would be required prior to the issuance of a building permit on proposed Lot 1. So the subject property, the reason that they're doing this, this property currently consists under one tax ID, but it's actually three separate legal descriptions. So they're proposing to reconfigure these lot lines in order to consolidate all three of those legal descriptions into two platted lots. So for the purposes of a layout plat, staff does not see any significant issues with the applicant's request. So I would like to do the recommendations in two, if I could, Mr. Chair. The recommendation for the subdivision regulations variance, SV 1807, staff recommends approval of subdivision regulations variance 1807 for the following waivers: plat scale of 1 inch to 300 feet, any additional road improvements to South Castle Creek Road, dedication of right-of-way and improvements to the undeveloped section line right-of-way, and percolation test and soil profile hole information.
All right. Any questions for staff? Any audience members like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none, first recommendation for subdivision regulation variance, staff recommends approval of SV 1807 with the following waivers. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carries.
And then my second recommendation for layout plat 1835, staff would recommend approval of layout plat 1835, and I would like to change that to 10 conditions. I would recommend that condition number one be removed as the surveyor and the highway department have satisfied that requirement and both seem to be agreeable to where the lines are at this time.
Any questions for staff on this one? Any audience members like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none, current recommendation is to approve layout plat PL 1835 with the following 10 conditions, based on the edits that Cassie just gave. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Takes us to item number 26.
Item 26 is layout plat 1836 to create lots A and B of Nautilus Acres subdivision. The applicants and agents at this time are Brett and Linda Hilgeman, and the landowners are Harry and Rosina Hilgeman, if I can get that right. And the subject property is 2.59 acres. The Hilgeman's were before you earlier this year to request a caretaker's residence on the subject property, and that conditional use permit was granted in May of this year. On the subject property, there is an existing cabin, a double-wide, mobile home shed, and they take access off of Sanctuary Place. There is also a recorded outhouse on the property, which the applicant has stated they're going to remove from the property. As you see on the screen, there is the request to create lots A and Lot B of Nautilus Acres subdivision. On the left-hand side, outlined in yellow, is the actual drawing from the proposed layout plat. And to the right is a site survey showing the existing structures on the property and their encroachments or distances from lot lines. As you can see, about nine o'clock on that drawing, where they're looking to vacate a portion of Sanctuary Place right-of-way, there appears to be a shed in that right-of-way, plus it's also 5.1 feet, according to the surveyor from the lot line. It needs to be a minimum of eight feet. And also, it appears that part of that house is encroaching into that right-of-way. With their request to vacate that through this plating process, those two items will no longer be an issue as far as the right-of-way, but that shed will need to be removed or a lot size variance or a setback variance be obtained to be able to encroach that close to the lot line. With those options, the applicant has stated they're just going to move it. It'd be easier that way. This was routed through the interdepartmental review. The highway department mentioned that with the subdivision regulation requires that there be a 40-foot, a 40-feet, a foot-wide access easement on the property. They're only requesting a 25. The applicant can choose to request that during the subdivision regulations variance portion. They just have not applied for that at this time. The county environmental supervisor, planning supervisor, excuse me, would just like to mention that there's... A construction permit would be needed for any disturbance greater than 10,000 square feet, that the outhouse will either have to have the pit filled in or a vault privy placed underneath the outhouse structure. And again, the applicant, as stated during the conditional use permit in May of this year, is just going to remove it from the property. And on Exhibit A, which is the site survey on the right showing the structures, it appears to show that there's an existing greenhouse that may have been constructed over the drain field, about six o'clock on the drawing, the very bottom. So that's an item that we're going to have to address with the applicant in the future stages of this plating process. The register of deeds wanted to comment that the requested subdivision name of Nautilus Acres subdivision could not be used. They recommend calling it Nautilus Acres subdivision number 2 as there was already a request for Nautilus subdivision some years ago, and that is no longer in existence. But there is a history of Nautilus Acres subdivision in the records for registered deeds, and they didn't want any confusion. So Nautilus Acres number 2 would be their recommendation. And also, Department of Equalization wanted to comment that it appears that the owner's last name may have been misspelled on the certificates of ownership. The request, again, for PL 1836 is to subdivide the existing property into two lots. The proposed two lots will meet the required lot size for their current zoning districts, excuse me, and the landowners will need to address the concerns with the outhouse, shed, and single-family residence at a minimum prior to the recording of a plat with the register of deeds. With that, staff would recommend approval of layout plat 1836 with nine conditions.
Any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This right-of-way, is that going to be the approach to this Lot B, then?
The proposed right-of-way?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. You know, I lived across from this property for 24 years, and the Hilgeman's are great people. But my one comment is, it seems to me that there's something of a slope between the house and the highway. And the highway sets down at a much lower grade than...
Correct.
And, I mean, I'm not saying you can't put a road in there by any means, but I think it could be kind of problematic in terms of just soil shifting and, you know... So I think that's something to be kind of alert to, and I'm not in a position to judge it, but, you know...
It could be why they're not going with the 40-foot wide right-of-way.
Yes.
And I'm sure the road's not going to be that wide.
Yeah.
And then we'll just make sure that we put conditions in the future that stabilize the down slope.
Yeah, because they're going to have to cut into that. There's going to be some elevation there towards the house, I think. Anyway, that was my only concern.
Any further questions? PJ, I have a question. The greenhouse that you mentioned, on the map, I see there's a rectangle, signified by the greenhouse, and then there's a rectangle around that. Is that a slab? What is that?
Well, that's what we got to figure out. When we went out there, and we have pictures of it, we can't quite figure out what the other rectangle is for.
Okay, so that's...
It wasn't going to hold this up, because this is just a preliminary step.
Okay.
So it's something that we can handle the next step.
That was just like, someone laid a slab over it, or a portion of it, maybe?
Sometimes, like, they'll... When these are... Very rarely does it happen when engineers are drawing these, they leave something on and forget to unclick it or take it off, which could have been what happened.
Is it simply a garden outside of the...
There's a fenced-in area, but...
Yeah, I think that's what it is.
Could be that. Any further questions for staff? Any audi... Oh, go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, PJ, I think I kind of remember this discussion back in May, but for historical factor, or not, why are we insisting that they remove the outhouse? Is that part of the ordinances that just can't have an outhouse? I kind of like the idea, the historical, you know, driving by a piece of property and seeing an outhouse there. Why are we forcing them to remove it, or are we not?
Well, Commissioner, we're not forcing them to remove it. They have the choice to either create a pit privy underneath it where it's a self-contained system underneath, which there are outhouses in the county that are like that.
Right.
They're choosing to remove it.
Oh, okay. Too bad. Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Any members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? Any members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? All right, current recommendation is to approve layout plat 1836 with the following nine conditions. Is there a motion to approve?
I would so move.
Motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Takes us to item number 27. All right, item number 27, we get to address the scheduling of this hearing once again. Has everyone heard the reason why we're rescheduling? I'm sure that everyone has heard the reason behind that. I will say that I would like to do one quick thing, if y'all don't mind. I'd like to have public, if there's any public here who'd like to comment on this, if they would like to give their input on the meeting first, and then we can discuss it after we've had that input. If anyone has no objection to that, I will do that as well. Mainly because we're, mainly because we're removing it again, so it...
Is that in addition to the written comments that we were handed?
Yes. If there's someone else here, because we were handed some written comments, so I want to go ahead and just make sure that, you know, both sides are represented either way, so, and if that's...
Are both sides here?
I don't know. I haven't seen one of them, but I know what we received here, so...
Thank you.
Does anyone here like to speak on behalf of this item number 27 for the scheduling of the next hearing, for the, basically only talking about availability and timeframe? If not, then we'll just have the membership discuss it and figure out what's best for for us and what we think is best for the, for this meeting. From what I understand, and Mark, you can correct me if I'm wrong, last time y'all did, when y'all, when the Board of Commissioners scheduled, y'all scheduled two dates just in case.
Correct.
And I don't think we did that when we had our conversation, so that might be a good thing for us to consider while we're doing this, is scheduling two dates with the caveat that if we don't come to a conclusion or recommendation on the first date, we have a second date to continue it to, just in case for the advertising purposes, so that we're not having to re-advertise another 30 days out if we decide that we're going to continue it for whatever reason.
Sure, and what constitutes a day to you? An eight-hour day?
I'm talking more, I got what you're saying. I'm talking more of a date, a date and time that we would say, you know, our first meeting is going to be on this date and time, the next meeting would be this date and time starting, and then, you know, obviously if there's a lot of individuals here to give comment, it could be a full day, it might be two hours.
Sure.
I can't guarantee what that's going to end up being.
I, I understand. Okay, thank you.
If we schedule two days, are we then obligated to at least be there for two days or a portion thereof?
No, because the way we're going to word it, and I'll let Michelle Hoffman speak to that, because she's the legal one there.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, that issue was also addressed when the board set their initial two-day hearing. The motion should basically be that we're, you're scheduling a hearing on this date, whatever that date might be, and if a decision, if the commission feels that the matter should be continued for further comment and ultimately decision, then there would be the second date. But that, the, the motion should be very clear that any hearing on the second date will be only if necessary, and the notice in the newspaper will also reflect that, so no one shows up the second date and says, oh, I wasn't able to be heard.
That's the problem I'm concerned about. Well, they had it for two days, and I couldn't get there the first day, so, you know, what's the deal? You know, so we have to be very careful with that, I would think.
Exactly, so you need to make sure it's very clear that the, the second date will be held only if necessary, and only if, if this commission feels they need further public comment or need additional time for, to make a decision.
Then how many meetings have been held in the evening over the past number of years? Is this typical for a meeting to be held at night versus during the day?
Since I've been on the Board of Commissioners, it's been, it's been typical to have them at night when people can get off work and come and comment.
Oh, okay. When we met before, I think PJ, you addressed fact about security in the building and so on and so forth, and so, and as much as I'm new to the commission, I'm just trying to clarify in my mind.
Yeah, most of the, majority of the meetings are during the day. There's maybe been five evening meetings, I think, in the last four or five years that I can remember. There are more logistics that go into it, though, as far as having a sheriff deputy or two here, making sure that the building's open, that kind of stuff, but it's not stuff that we haven't done before.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe since I've been on the, on the planning commission, we've only had one in the evening. You can correct me if I'm wrong, PJ, like, in the last four years, we've only had just one evening meeting, and that one was not well-attended, if I remember correctly on that one.
Wow.
Not saying that it doesn't mean that we shouldn't have an evening meeting.
Right. The ones that we had were the mining ordinance, mining ordinances, and the special meetings that we had for that, so...
Right.
Because of the attendance, there was so much of it.
Right.
Thank you.
Any further questions or further input on this? Do I understand correctly, we're looking at at least January to make sure that we meet all the notification, advertisement, criteria, and everything of that nature?
Correct. That's why it's up on the screen for you there. We also have a list of the dates that one of their representatives is not able to attend.
Can you explain this calendar to me then?
Basically, yeah, what this is, is a office calendar that we use for submittals, so you can see the major holidays that the county is either open or not open, so the first is New Year's, which were closed. On the 21st, the observance of Martin Luther King's birthday, but we're actually open. Planning commission meetings on the 14th and 28th, board meetings on the 2nd and 15th. The red and the green, I would just, you can disregard those, those are just the base dates when people submit applications, and then showing what meetings that they will be heard at. So the main things to look at are the purple, blue, and orange, or yellow.
Do you have a recommended date?
It's up to you guys. We're here Monday through Friday, pretty much, 8 to 5, so...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Rich.
So Jerry, could you let us know what the advanced notification requirements are for the meeting and the newspaper and all of those things?
Well, at least 30 days out that they would have to resend their notices, okay?
So 30 days?
Well, that's where their notices to resend, and then for the advertisements, it's two successive weeks, and then at least 10 days prior to the meeting.
So I'm trying to under, what's our, if we, if we decide on a date today, what's, and that notification goes out sometime this week, when's the earliest available time to get this resolved?
Are you guys looking at December or January?
Isn't it 30 days?
Not for advertising.
For, you got to advertise 30 days out.
I see, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's the notices you need to send to your neighbors 30 days.
I see.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office, we can double-check. I believe the first available week, given the 30-day notice by letter that's required under the Section 320, would be December 17th. I think the reason we were looking at January was just because of the conflict that the holidays might present for the commission and the board. I would also note that the legal representative of the applicant is, has certain conflicts. I will mention that the first two weeks in January dates that look as though they're available for the commission as well as the legal representative is January 3rd through 4th and January 8th through 10th. I do have the dates for the third and fourth week of January as well.
Those are the first available?
Yeah, January 3rd through 4th and January 8th through 10th. Moving into the third week in January, it'd be January 16th through 18th. We have to avoid regular meeting dates.
So you're saying that Thursday and a Friday in January?
Not necessarily Thursday and Friday, the Thursday and Friday of the 3rd and 4th, January 3rd and 4th would work.
Eight and 10.
And January 8th through 10th, which is a Tuesday through a Thursday, and January 16th through 18th.
So from my standpoint, then, I, I, I mean, should we just propose dates? So we, I'd be looking at the evening of the 8th or the 9th for the first meeting, and then I would go to the 16th or the 15th for a second meeting? I mean, do you just keep those a week apart? Is that, just throwing that out there.
I'd avoid the 15th, it's already a board meeting day.
You don't think the meeting should follow the very next day? Or do they need to?
Could.
It'd be nice if, if you could, do them back-to-back. It's up to the commission.
So the 8th and the 9th?
Yeah, I could do the 8 to 9. The 8th for the meeting and then the 9th if, if necessary.
I am available both the 8th and the 9th as well.
Are we talking about evening meetings both days, or one day, a daytime meeting, the other nighttime meeting?
That would be, you're...
Up to us, yeah.
We anticipate probably a six to eight-hour meeting at least the first time.
Sure.
I would plan around that.
A six to eight-hour meeting?
If shorter, that'd be great.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, is there an option to do a weekend? Is that...
I don't know, it's never been requested.
Because there was a request in one of our emails, because if it's going to be that long, I mean, I couldn't imagine being here at 5 till possibly midnight for one day.
We hear till 11 one night for a meeting once.
Somehow, my guess that on a weekend, the attendance would not be so good. I, I just think people would say, oh, this is a weekend. I mean, you know, they're more inclined, I think, to go out on an, on an evening, quite frankly. That's just my...
It's important to them.
Assessment of human behavior.
Well, I'd like to make a suggestion that, and it was the same suggestion I made last meeting, last time we did this, but start in mid-afternoon, like 3 o'clock or something. Because I don't really think that most people that come to these sit through the entirety of the meeting either, and this way, it will get some done during that last portion of the afternoon, and then extend however long we need it into the, into the evening.
Good idea.
I think that's a very good point.
When we had visited before, we indicated that we would limit the amount of time which person could speak. I think we ought to, in addition to limiting the amount of time they can speak, I think we should limit the number of hours that the meeting will be held. In, in other words, you know, if we go, you know, from 3, you know, add eight hours, and that's it, and then go on to the next day.
At eight hours, I like...
Well, but I think, I think the chair can, can terminate it and we, we move to the next day at any time. I mean, isn't that right? You can just say, we're tired, let's pick this up.
I don't know if putting a, a start and stop date or time on it is appropriate, and for that very reason. I mean, what happens if we get here and we, we're like, well, we, we, you know, you know, it's 10, let's just say it's 10 o'clock, and we said it was going to be eight hours, and that's till 11, so are we going to hang out here until 11 just in case somebody walks in?
Oh, I see. I understand.
I don't want to commit us to being here if we've heard every single person going through, and we can come to a conclusion, and then we have to sit here for an hour just to wait, just in case.
I understand.
I don't think that's appropriate. But I do think if we do start it in the afternoon, like you said, and that might be the best option, is starting it in the afternoon on the first date, and then continuing it in the morning the next day. If we need to, maybe, maybe consider, depending on where we're at when we get here, ending it at 9:00. Not that we say it's from 3 to 9:00, but consider ending it at 9:00 if we haven't come up to a conclusion, and then starting, and then continue on the following morning.
That makes good sense.
That way, we're kind of still fresh, we're not wasting another half a day and coming back in. I shouldn't say wasting a half a day, because some of us get up and do other things, but I think I kind of like your thought process on that one.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Any other input on that?
Sounds sensible.
I have a request or a restatement of the motion.
I don't know if there was an actual motion yet, we were just discussing...
I didn't hear one either.
Discussing the, the thought process. But if I understand what Sandy's going with and what we were talking about, we would start at roughly 3 o'clock in the afternoon or 2 o'clock in the afternoon, so I'm open to whatever that is, and then go till a, you know, whatever time we deem is appropriate for us, and then the next morning, kick off at 09:00, a normal meeting. So now, it would just come down to say, what time do we start? We need a motion to say, what time do we start? What, and what days are we going to cover?
Are you talking about the 8th? Is that what you're, or are you just...
Well, I've heard a couple people saying, I've heard some people say the 8th is fine, so to me, the 8th is fine. If it doesn't mesh with anybody else's schedule, we should probably know about it.
Yeah, I've got eye surgery on the 7th, so I wouldn't, which I don't think would incapacitate me totally, but I think I can get it rescheduled, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Is there any thought of what the minimum time needed should be on this?
Oh, I think they've already mentioned, we're going to probably spend anywhere between six and eight hours with testimony, opponent and proponent.
So a 2 o'clock start would almost certainly go past 5:00, definitely giving people a chance after 5:00.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or it could start at 3:00. So what if we start at 3:00 on the 8th, and then we start at 3:00 on the 9th if needed? Or do you want to start right away in the morning on the, on the 9th?
I think starting in the morning is good, and this is the reason behind it. Some people work in the morning, and then some people work in the evening, so, you know, you've got two different groups of people that might not be able to make the, the one on the 3rd. I mean, remember when I worked at the hospital, my work shift started at midnight, or at noon, and carried me through to midnight, so, you know what I mean? You're going to hit some or you're not. We may not even hit them on the 9th if we scheduled it 9:00 in the morning either. You know, if we make a decision on, see, that's kind of the, the catch-22 in this. We, we could come to a decision, and no one would, you know, need to testify the following day, right?
So my, my feeling is that the later afternoon is probably, allows some people to be excused from their normal work responsibilities easier than in the morning or earlier in the day. And that way, they can say, you know, I'm taking a couple hours off early Joe, and, and that, I think, might be more effective. So I, I would say the 3 o'clock thing, that's why I become attracted to that.
Yeah, that makes good sense.
Okay. Well, is there a motion for a specific time and date?
I would make a motion to have the special meeting on January 8th at 3:00 PM. And the second meeting, if needed, on January 9th at 9:00 AM.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, do. Motion carries. All right, so that gets us that. All right. Item number 28.
Item 28 is county board report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendation from the October 22nd, 2018 planning commission meeting.
Any questions for PJ on that? All right, item number 29, items from the public. Anybody would like to come forward? If not, item number 30, items from the staff.
Item 30, it says up to C, but we have up to E.
Oh, you've added another one even after we talked?
Added two more, yeah.
All right.
The first is the building permit report for October of this year. Single-family residences are down 12% over this time in the last year. We've taken in 67, single-family residents' building permits over 76 at this time in 2017. It appears, and again, comment on this every time, cell towers are up 54%, again, probably a spike in new technology. Sheds and barns are down 16%, and to counteract that, garages and carports are up 16%. Residential additions are down 19%, but overall, for the year, we've taken in 729, issued, sorry, 729 building permits over 627 last year for a 16% increase. The valuation, however, is down by 20%.
Any questions for PJ? All right, B.
Item B is our holiday luncheon on Monday, December 3rd. That's just a regular meeting day, I believe, right? And then, right after the meeting, we just go up to the planning commission, planning commission, planning department in that large conference room, and we just have brunch or lunch, depending on what time it is. in that large conference room and we just have brunch or lunch, depending on what time it is. So you guys don't need to bring anything other than just attendance. But if you wanna buy Starbucks for everybody, we won't argue about that. Item C is planning two interviews and, sorry, Cassie? We want one for each one, right? A plan or two interview? Okay, all right. As we've discussed before, the building permits that we take in, we take a certain percentage of that money and the rest went to the Highway Department for a drainage fund. The Board of Commissioners approved a kind of a reallocation of some of the funds. We give the Highway Department the first $65,000 that we take in with building permits every year. Then the remainder goes to the Planning Department. And in using this money that is already being generated without any increases or anything else, it's able to support a plan or two position. So we've already started recruitment. We actually are gonna have our first round of interviews on the 27th of November and then the 7th of December. And we're looking for a planning commissioner to represent one planning commissioner at the first meeting, or the first interview on the 27th between 10 and 1:30 and then a different planning commissioner on the December 7th meeting, which time's to be determined.
What were those dates again, please, PJ?
The first is November 27th between basically 10 and 1:30, but arriving probably at 9:45. And then the second would be November 7th, December 7th, but we don't have a time for that one yet.
Do you want a commitment today from someone?
Well, our next meeting is the 26th would be the day before the first interview.
I could be, I could represent on either one of those days, I believe.
I could make either one work as well, so you pick one.
Let me know if you need me to...
We don't need motions, we're just looking for somebody.
Just let me know if you need me and if so, we're today and I can make that work.
Anybody else? Did you, I'm sorry.
We'll talk after, I'll, I'll set a date and then we can figure out.
Okay, did you have any? Okay, thank you. Actually leads into item D. There will be two more opportunities to serve on interview panels because Mike King, our ordinance officer, his last day was last Friday. He's moving back to Florida. He had an opportunity that he couldn't really pass up to live next to family, which doesn't really come up as often as you would like, but he, probably he couldn't pass it up, so. Unfortunately, that's gonna be, it's gonna be a huge loss to our department and to the community because he was able to do a lot and make a lot of friends out in the community and get stuff done without having to expend extra taxpayer dollars for abatements and stuff, so.
Very good.
Item E, just a reminder for the December 17th Planning Commission meeting, that is a 2 PM start, not a 9 AM. It's the only meeting of the Planning Commission of the year that does not start at 9.
I'm sorry, which date?
December 17th. So I'd just like to remind everybody of that, because sometimes it can kinda creep up on you pretty fast.
PJ, just so you know, if y'all don't mind me going back to that, I, I think I can do December 7th actually the best for being on that interview panel, just let me know the time.
Okay.
That way Kathy, if you want the 27th, my family's in town.
I can, I can, I'll make it work, yes.
Okay.
Okay, what time on December 17th?
2 PM.
Thank you.
Traditionally, actually up to about three years ago, I think, we only had one meeting in December, which then a lot of applications would come in, conditional use permits and such, that had to wait almost six weeks for even the first, well, in addition to the advertising for the first hearing and the board would have to hear those, so we threw in the second meeting. I think this was when, you might've been first year?
I think so, that sounds about right.
And so at the time of adding the second meeting, it was also discussed to have it at 2.
Sure.
So we kinda kept with that since then.
All right.
Nothing further?
Nothing further. Anything from the membership?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
I'm likely not going to be here on November 26th for the November 26th meeting. I, I'm not able to confirm that at this time, but it's looking like I, I will not be there. And then unfortunately, I will not be in town for December 3rd as well, so one of these years I'll get to the party.
You're missing out when you don't go to that party, Rich. All right, any, any other items from the membership? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We are adjourned, thank you.